Awesome.
We have a quorum, let's do it. First agenda item is the treasurer's report, which as I say, I tried to get printed, but then the Zoom took over the screen. Let me go back and find it. The one thing I remember is Jesse saying, we've got $4,000 which we need to spend.
I could take a quick trip to the Bahamas.
Well, I think some of that could be on advertising for our event, right?
Well, it may have to go on trees, or she was saying. On trees. Or maybe getting some of the tree work done. Where is it?
I saw our flyer yesterday that you posted, Sarah.
I'm gonna start doing once a week. Perfect, I'm gonna start, and then on school break, I'm gonna drive around, I'm gonna put on like, downtown Pinon places I know the owner, see if we can get it up in Woodstock too.
Well, I I stopped at Roslyn yesterday, I was meeting some friends there, and I I talked to Dee and asked her if we can, not only if we can put them there, but I said, when I often, when I'm down there with my dog, there are lots of moms with little kids. I said, would it be okay if I hand them out? It's a free event, so it's not like we're looking for anything. She said, oh yeah, that's a great idea. So I thought, and then she said, I can post them on that board on the little building there. So I thought, well, that'll be good, because there'll, you know, it'd be nice if we get little kids to come.
That's great. Last Green Valley has it, and they they're gonna put it into their programs, they already have the information. Yeah.
The garden, I was, I'm not gonna mess up the agenda, I'll keep, I'll keep my mouth shut, go ahead.
Let's do treasurer, finish treasurer's report, okay, because we're supposed to stick with the agenda, it's a special meeting. So she has allowed for the monies for mowing, biweekly mowing, and that will leave us $4,000 that we need to spend before June the 30th.
I'm gonna get that weed whacker that costs about $250. You know, a nice, heavy duty weed whacker that we can use, so that's.
That will, that will take, but that's not four, I mean, $4,000 is a significant chunk of change and could get some really good tree work done that we talked about doing.
Then why don't we spend the rest on tree work? But isn't that, can we spend the rest on tree work, or is it too little?
We we will not get the whole job done for 4,000, I don't think, but we could you know, focus on the most important items to get done.
Which is?
Sorry?
Which is cutting the ashes?
The ashes, we had that estimate of $5,000 from that company, from Julian's company. But maybe another company would do it for 4,000. We also have that great big tree down on the back left-hand corner, which has to come down.
That would be nice, because that's kind of an eyesore down there.
Certainly is.
Yeah.
It's a question of who do we ask to do it? Chad is not here, and he was gonna talk to the town arborist, who was not, who would not climb trees, but he can still cut wood down. But I, we do need to get it, to get it spent on something. And some of it can go for the supplies. I mean, to cover, I mean, this, have you put your, in your bill yet for the, for the banners, Andy?
No, not yet.
So I mean, some will go for that. We also.
That's not much.
We also could buy some, some bushes or trees for the swamp area. You know, there are some things that we could plant in that area that grow in the shade and love to be damp.
Yeah, those high bush, blueberries that we put in, yeah, there are a few different things that would go in there.
So we, we could probably spend, you know, depending on what it's gonna cost us to take care of that tree at the bottom of the garden. Maybe we could take care of that tree and then get like some button bushes, those are good. Into the area.
What about, do you have the man's name that Chad was gonna contact? What about calling him and saying, would you take that tree down for $2,000?
That's Bill Rathbone. Anne Rathbone's husband, you know Anne Rathbone, yeah. So Bill Rathbone is a town tree man. Let me talk, Chad said he was gonna talk to Bill, and I hate to jump over Chad.
Well, then why don't, why don't we contact Chad and just say, would you ask Bill if he'll take that tree down for $2,000?
Right, okay.
You know, just put it out there and, and, you know, tell him we need to spend the money, tell Chad that, not Bill.
Right.
And say also, if he can't do it, that we're more than happy to do it. Like, if he's too busy, I know this is spring season, I'm sure he's busy, I'm more, more than happy to do it, but reach out to him first.
Yeah. I will. Okay, cuz that, that's a priority, that we have to get that money spent.
Isn't that crazy?
Item on the agenda is the signs for Celebrate Spring. You have.
Hold on.
Okay, show, show Sarah the banners.
Yeah, I brought one in just to do that.
Oh, nice.
Chase Graphics.
Oh, that's awesome. That's great.
You know, they're so good, I just went in and said, this is what we wanted to say, and she said, you want a tree on it? I said, yes. They're really nice.
How are we, how are we gonna mount that, Andy, so it doesn't fall over or blow over?
I'm gonna get those, I always call it angle iron, but that's not what it is, those green metal stakes, you know, real heavy duty. And I am gonna ask Chad to help me, cuz he came one time with a big old sledgehammer that I couldn't even pick up.
Well, you're, you're not gonna be you doing anything with your back for, for a while, so.
And then you can do zip ties onto those, and we're gonna angle them, Sarah, so you can see them coming each way, sort of right out by the street, so you really can see them.
Okay.
And secure them really well. I don't think anyone would take them, but you never know.
So it, we've got another, what, two more weeks in April, and then essentially three weeks in May? When should we start putting, sending out all the flyer stuff? I have not sent out any email information yet, because I don't wanna go out too early.
I only did it on this week, I just put it on Woodstock Proud, which is the, their, you know, and then I put it on the Arboretum site, but that's all I've done, just because I think it is too early, but I wanted to like, pop, like, get people just like, like, looking at it, and I also, I put, if I, now I have a reminder to do it every week. So that was probably my planning purposes as well, to get my act together.
Yeah, I took some, you know, I took pictures and sent them to people, and they said, when is it? That's in May, so it's kinda early.
Yeah, so we should probably wait until May to start doing it, okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
But I was gonna, it's still okay to drive around this next week and put up signs in like,
I think, I think so.
I would.
And then, and then put them back, you know, cuz they're probably gonna come down, so put them back up, you know, like, two weeks beforehand. I think.
Good girl.
Okay. How about program stuff? You had the materials, Andy, have you had a chance to look at the materials for the, for the scavenger hunt?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you know, yes, I've done the scavenger hunt. And it's real, Sarah, you and your students would laugh, cuz it's really cut and paste. I'm taking pictures out of books, cutting them out, putting them on a piece of paper that I, with my computer, just put scavenger hunt for, I can't remember, Palmer Arboretum, Spring Celebration Scavenger Hunt, and then I've got all these pictures, all different sizes. But I thought the kids would like that, you know, it's really kinda fun to look at, cuz it's not perfect, I like things like that. Like, a picture of a bird is larger than a picture of the frog, but they'll, and it has, I've taken pictures where it has the word of what the thing is, so, and then I'm gonna print a whole bunch of those.
And you're not violating any?
No, in fact, the best thing was the Boy Scout handbook. I said, God, how many of those do I have? They have an awesome area in there about all the different animals, you know, mammals and reptiles, and so I got a lot of the pictures from there after I used my own books for some of them. So, yeah, that's all gonna be done, and Sarah, I don't know if you heard, we thought it would be more fun rather than laminate them, to have each child have their own paper, so they can take it home, or do whatever they want with it, rather than have 25 laminated ones and then be trying to get them back from the kids.
Just, just to make sure you're not doing anything illegal, Andy, like, no copyright violations.
No, 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 my, here's my, here's my Sibley bird book, no, no, everything is my insect, insect books, no.
I know, but what are the copyright protections of the pictures inside there?
None, none, they're mine.
Okay.
These books are all 100 years old, so, no.
You're outside copyright protection, okay.
I think.
I have about eight milk jugs saved right now, and I'm just gonna keep on saving them.
Me too, and in fact, right while I was sitting here, I sent a email to my Amy Eaton, my neighbor, and said, do you get your milk and gallon jug, so I'm starting to ask people to save them.
Okay, great.
And one of the things I was thinking about doing was, right when it gets close to the time, maybe we could meet at my house or something and cut those out, get the dowels in, and then have the paint and everything ready for, you know, you know, do a lot of prep work ahead of time instead of the night before.
That's a good idea, yeah, that's a great idea.
We can talk about that.
Have you tried using the paints on the plastic?
No.
Works, and it's weatherproof?
No, Jesse sent me an email one day saying she would pick up the string and the paint. So I'm counting on her to get the paint that will stick to a milk jug. I mean, she knows what she's doing, she's not gonna get the little watercolor thing, she's probably gonna get tempera paint or something.
Okay. Sounds good.
So that's pretty much covered. I haven't gotten the dowels yet, but that's nothing, I'll just get the lawn pieces and cut them.
Sounds good, yeah, and getting us all together to cut the, the doors and windows and things for the, the houses is great, not the house, but the feeders is great.
One of the things that occurs to me, and we haven't tied this up yet, and I haven't, I haven't, I, you know, I've got the civic committee in the garden club who said they're gonna help us. We're definitely gonna have to have, there are only a few of us, so we're gonna have to have people who are sitting with the birdhouses, who are sitting with this, you know, cuz we can't all be everywhere. You know, people guiding to where Elaine is, and to where Aaron is, and all that, rather than us, I mean, I know I can't go up and down that hill 100 times.
Right, now, I have, I've given Mark Mosley all the dates, and he was gonna, he had a meeting coming up, and he was gonna let his Lions Club members know about the work, both the work dates and this particular day. So, contact him and say, you know, do you have, what do you have for us? I think we can also try and get the local Boy Scouts, or the young, there's, there's a boy in Young Marines who is wanting service hours, and so his mother contacted the town hall. So I will call her and ask for him to come. And maybe there are other young Marines who would be willing, be interested in coming, you know?
Well, you know, that reminds me, I forgot about it, Chad sent me that text one day saying he had someone who wanted to do some work, I need to get back to him about that, I know, I forgot about it. Zoe, no, girl.
Um, Sarah, do you think, hey, Academy, sorry?
Yeah, always the high school kids, I think, they need, NHS always needs service hours. And that, speaking of which, we got the garden club thing, and I sent it out to all the NHS people. Also, I had to email Chris to do something else for me today, but I'll email Chris tomorrow to say, ask Victor Tote if he can send out the flyer to all the little kids, all them, but I needed Chris to do something else, so I, I don't, I don't like to bombard him, little things at a time, so I'll email him tomorrow.
Okay, Sarah, that sounds great, terrific.
And then, why don't I, why don't we come up with the, how many people do you think we need working? Or what, like, jobs do you think we need to do, and what are we doing? So I think that would give us a better of what we're asking for.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's, Jesse said, Sarah, just for your information, that we can park in her yard.
Okay.
So that'll be nice.
Working there, not, not everybody.
Cars out of the way, but then we're definitely gonna have to have someone who's helping with the logistics of parking sort of thing, and then like I said, the milk jugs, that needs to be on a separate table, all set up with a couple people sitting there who like to work with kids.
Yeah.
That's for sure, and you know, someone handing out the scavenger hunt things, because I think those of us who are familiar with the arboretum more, will be able to say, oh, and over here we have, you know, and that would be us, Philippa. And then, you know, that, don't you agree that that would be helpful? You're gonna be doing the tours of the trees and the garden. But I think, I think that would be a good thing for me to be doing, up on top, just kinda directing people.
Sounds great, Andy, yes, absolutely, I'm sorry, that's my puppy yapping in the background.
And, and mine is right here, cuz she can hear your dog, so she's like, what's going on?
I have two, two dogs outside who want to come in out of the rain, and the puppy is kinda complaining like, ah, I'm so sad. I would think that we, sorry?
My dog keeps running back and forth from the door, cuz he.
I'm sorry.
What's going on?
I would think we could use about 12 people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we could, I think people should be in pairs, just because then they don't get too bored, if there's nobody, nothing to do, but if they, they can also handle things if they're getting overwhelmed. So we need like a couple of people at the registration table, because they need to take down people's names, email addresses, post addresses. We needed a couple of people directing people to park, in case there are a lot of people who come up. We really need a couple of people showing where, where to go for your picnic. We need then two people on each craft table. And there'll be at least two or three of those craft tables set up, so at least 12 people we can use.
Yeah, I think so, no, I haven't. I haven't tied anybody down in the garden club yet, but they're, you know, I know Linda will, they'll come and do the things like identifying the wildflowers and, you know.
I'm guessing Linda will be at that shade garden, and that Jean will be at the water garden, right?
Right, yeah.
So we don't have to cover those areas, they're gonna stay there and, and just answer questions and, and show that they're good stuff. Hang on, I'll be right back.
These, these dogs don't know what to make of what's going on.
Okay, Reese, you're okay.
Now, who was just telling me about you and your dog down on the Riverwalk? Maybe it was when, when I was at Roslyn yesterday.
Oh, mirror time.
Everyone had their dogs there except me, which I thought, nah, you know, if I bring Zoe, that'll just, you know, really complicate things, we were just trying to sit and have lunch.
Yeah.
And Dee was, Dee was talking about you and your puppy.
Yeah. He didn't wanna go there today, we walked the long way, we went up Child Hill, down Arvynson, I was like, it's pouring out, he wanted to go.
Of course.
I know.
Okay, anything else that we need to talk about as far as publicity and materials?
Are we trying to get, are we putting on the Winnie Community Board, which I think is free?
We were gonna do that, we were also gonna, I was gonna call Gary and ask if we can come in and talk one morning.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, you and Philippa, Sarah.
Okay.
Cuz I told her, I'm not going down there at six o'clock. I'm up, but I don't wanna be down there.
It's a phone call now, you just have to call in.
Oh, really?
Yeah, 1370, yeah.
I'm looking at this just to see, see if it's gonna remind me of anything.
Table.
Elaine was out of town for three weeks, she might be back now, so I haven't even bothered her about her deal, and Aaron is going, well, you know, I, I just found out yesterday that I'm having back surgery on Wednesday, so I'm gonna try to tie Aaron down to Monday or Tuesday, I'll be okay after, but I just soon meet with him down at the Arboretum before, you know, Monday.
You sure that's smart, Andy, walking down, walking down around the arboretum with your back before the surgery?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's fine. It's, it is fine. I know what I can and can't do, I mean, I can't lift things at all, but I, I can walk. I mean, I walk with my dog all the, I mean, I'm fine.
Okay. So I will provide the tables, the chairs, the hand cleanser, the paper towels, the garbage cans, we'll, bags, we'll get all that stuff, then I have that on my list of materials.
And I have a six foot, I have a new six foot folding table, you know, one of those Costco's, say, folding ones, I'll bring that.
So when do you think you wanna put the, the banners up?
I think we do, first, May 1st.
A week before, May 1st?
Around May 1st, yeah. I wouldn't put it, I wait until we get into May before we put up something that says May, yeah.
Okay. So I think we're good to go, and we've got the rain date is, is the next day, is, is the Sunday.
Yeah, no, we don't have that on anything, but we're just, this is what we're gonna do, like the old Italians, you hang the rosary on the, on the clothesline. That'd always crack me up for weddings, you know, so, like, huh, what?
If you're an Italian, hang your rosary, okay?
Yeah, no, I'm not, I, I, Sarah, my joke is, I was for 21 years, my first marriage, I was Italian.
I did put the rain date in for the last Green Valley.
Oh, good, okay.
For a rain date, so I put it in that it would be Sunday, it would be the following day, so, and we had told Aaron and Elaine that it was gonna be Sunday, so they know it, okay?
Yeah.
So if, if you get any students to help out, Sarah, they should know that.
I won't cut that out until like, the first week of May, or else.
Right.
I'll just chase, be chasing them around.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is our meeting with Jay Swan.
Ooh.
We had a meeting with Jay Swan.
It was good.
It was a good meeting. Why don't you let Sarah know what, what your takeaway from it was?
I don't know if you can hear my dog, but she's, she's telling me she wants, she thinks she wants to go out, she's fine, but she's being a pest. He was great, he was very receptive, he took a lot of notes, he's very interested in the, in the arboretum. Right? I mean, I thought he was, I didn't know him, and I thought he was delightful. So, I mean, that's really my takeaway, Philippa, I mean, it sounds like he wants to help us, but it sounds like he doesn't know what that might look like, he was gonna talk to John.
But we did talk, talk to him about calamities that could be very, very expensive and go way beyond our budget. And he does, he said that the town does have a calamity account. So if there was anything really disastrous, he, they would, they would pitch in and help out. He also was very supportive of all the activities that we're doing down there, like this Celebrate Spring. He was very supportive of that, so that we have his, you know, green thumb of approval for that. He also thought the idea of Jesse had had of encouraging the art department at the academy to create some sculptures that could come in for and not a permanent, but a temporary sculpture exhibit. The idea of the mural, he thought was an excellent idea, so we have town support for those ideas that, that was, that was really, I thought, very encouraging. He was going to talk to John about what could the town crew do for us?
Okay.
Because we had talked about that, and they've got some reservations, but we, he said he would, he would discuss more with John Navarro about what, you know, cooperative endeavors we could do. So we sort of covered, I think, all of the lists that we had. We did not get a promise for any more monies at this point, the budget is very, very tight. He, he has visited the Arboretum himself, so it's not like he's not familiar with it, he thinks it's a gem, which is a nice positive way to say it. He, what else was my takeaway?
Well, he definitely understood, just as a homeowner, that, you know, if you have a budget of $5,000 and you have a huge tree come down, and it's gonna cost $5,000 to remove it, but you have to, because it's dangerous. You know, I mean, that doesn't take a lot of explanation, I mean, he was writing notes, and then Philippa encouraged him to tell us about this emergency fund, because it would be a problem, you know, it'd be a huge problem for us, so he gets it. He gets it, I was, I was really impressed, I was really happy when we left.
Yeah, he was, he did encourage us to seek donations for our support.
Okay.
So that, you know, to, when we take the information for people who come to our Celebrate Spring Day, we should have like, a little sign that says, to make a donation, you send your check to this site. But we also said that we were gonna be sending out a letter, maybe a month after this day.
Yep.
To all the people that we have, and he, he was, he was encouraging of that, that, that it's good to remind people, those people who've supported the Arboretum in the past, that this is sort of something that they do every year or every other year, oh yes, I send my check to the Arboretum. That those small amounts, even if it's 20 bucks, 25 bucks, they add up, so he was, he was encouraging of that, and I think that he recognized that we are not just sitting there with our hands out, not doing anything, that, that we are actively trying to take care of the Arboretum's needs, and trying to raise money to take care of the Arboretum's needs, and also trying, trying to make it a more visited place, more used by the community, that, that, you know, what, what can we do in this, in this Arboretum, so that lots of people want to come here? And he, he thought that was a good idea also, so I, I felt good, like you, Andy, about the meeting.
Real good, and he wasn't in any rush, we were there a long time.
Good.
And I didn't feel one bit rushed, it was, it was great.
Yeah, well, it was a good meeting, yeah.
Crystal set that up, right? She's the one who finally got him to respond to you, Crystal, is that right?
Crystal sent it, set it up, and I think, and I, bless her heart, I think she, she heard us talking about it at the last meeting, about how difficult it was for us not to get together with Jay, so I think that, you know, she pushed Brenda, who is, who is the, the secretary, actually secretary, so that Brenda set it up for us, but I think it was Crystal who motivated Brenda to motivate Jay to set it up, so that was, it was good to have. Yeah. Good to have it happen. So we don't have anything actually hanging over after that meeting at this point, we, we had a sort of go-ahead, and he said, to make sure that we send the information about celebrating spring, they'll put it on the town website.
Okay.
So we need, if you could get that information to Crystal, they'll put it on the town website for us as well, which is great.
Can do.
I think that was the only thing, oh, I did get an email from Mitch saying that there was all kinds of twigs and branches all over the Arboretum, and he was, it would not be safe to mow yet. I was taken, sort of taken by surprise, I wasn't sure it was mowing time yet, but I did go down last week, and I cleared up all the twigs and branches, so.
Oh, God bless you for doing that.
There are two big branches there that I can't carry alone, but I'm hoping to corral my grandson or somebody else to come down with me, and we'll, we'll team it and carry them down. But, but right now, they're off the grass, they're on the side, but that big widow maker branch, that the kids last year were all, how are we gonna climb this tree and pull it down? That fell.
That came down, yeah.
But everything else, I picked up all the sticks and took them down, so that, that it's good to mow right now if he has to start mowing.
Oh, thanks for doing that, Philippa.
That's okay, you told me that there was no way you could bend over. It's done. So I don't have anything else.
That's it?
Saving milk jugs, because I don't drink milk, my parents are saving milk jugs.
Oh, oh, good.
Bless their hearts.
Well, I need to ask more people, I, I've been asked, you know, young families, I mean, they drink a lot of milk, it's just kinda not my, not my age group, but I can do that.
What, what I would ask is that if anybody goes to the Arboretum between now and our first work date.
Yep.
Take a look and see what you think needs to be done.
Okay, I'll get down, I'll get down this weekend.
Yeah, I'll head down when I'm on break.
Yeah, because, you know, I think, I mean, my feeling is that we shouldn't have black plastic showing. We've still got some wood chips up at the corner of the parking lot, so we can take those wood chips and cover the black plastic near the, near the bank.
Oh, yeah, well, that's what my grandson Anthony did last year, he moved all those chips over, now, are there, are there empty spaces?
There are some blank spaces that more chips need to go there, so we just need to move some chips over.
All right, cuz I think he's gonna come over Monday or Tuesday, and maybe I can get him to, you know, he's coming to help me, but he doesn't care what he's doing, and we could go over there. Are there enough chips?
Maybe.
Okay, cuz Chad just dumped a load in my yard. So I've got more here, we could load in the truck or something.
Well, could, can, can Chad dump, dump a load in the, in the, for the Arboretum?
We could ask him.
You wanna ask him?
I could, you know, I, I, you know, I mean, I just sent him a text one day and said, hey, I'll, I'll take some chips, you know, he has to get rid of them, I'll take some chips if you have any, and I always say, and I'll pay you if you want. And the next morning, there was a pile in my yard, so I thought, good thing I wanted them. I mean, the next day, he brought them early in the morning, so.
So, Andy, if you wouldn't mind checking with him and seeing if he could dump us some more chips?
Okay, so then I'll ask him about Bill also.
Okay, great, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, you seem to have a good conversational relationship with him, so that would be nice.
Yeah, well, you know, it's funny, cuz most of it is by text, but, you know, he plows for me, and every time I go out and we chat, so, he may be plowing tomorrow.
Oh.
I hope he will. Can you imagine?
I do remember we had snow, you know, on our lilacs one year. I do remember we had snow, um, you know, on our lilacs one year, so that it's not certainly not past the snow season.
Oh, no.
Sarah, Jay was very complimentary about you.
Aww.
He said that he really thought you were a wonderful person, full of energy, full of sparkle, full of great ideas. And we're a great, great addition, so. Very positive.
All the comments I say, when he wouldn't wanna meet with us then, I take them all back.
No, he's delight, he's delightful.
He's very great, very good.
Yeah. Okay, I think I think we're done.
All right.
Do we need to ask Jesse about anything? I don't think so. She told me she's getting those materials and then.
Well, I'll email her and just say, you're you're still doing that, just to make sure that she does, right? Cuz she's not gonna be there on this day, so she needs to get those materials ahead of time and get them to us.
Yeah, she just sent it not too long ago. I have a feeling she's gonna do that. I'll double check with her.
She's very responsible, so she.
She is, and she knows she's not gonna be there. So I think she's going to really try to do what she can ahead of time.
Yeah, she's not here tonight, Sarah, because um, they have a Zoom interview for Noah at a college she's interested in. So she needed to be part of that interview.
That makes sense. That's how it here.
That's what it is. Okay, um.
Good, Sarah, I hope everything goes well with your parents.
Yeah.
Everybody gets back on track.
Me too. Thank you. I hope it snow tomorrow. That's my big thing right now.
I can, I don't know. Doesn't look like it now, looking out my window.
No.
But.
I think it's gonna rain. It's still raining now. I don't think it's gonna get cold enough to snow. I think we're just gonna have more rain.
That's fine. It's okay.
Rain's good right now.
Um, Andy, do you need any help after your surgery on Wednesday?
No. I don't, I don't think so. Sarah, I'm having this new thing done. I crushed a vertebrae in my back. And the big, the last day of November, kept thinking it's gonna get better. It's not.
Yep.
At all. So I'm having this new thing done. I met with the doctor cuz it sounded so scary. I didn't know anything about it. It's cement augmentation. Where they go right into your, they drill right in. I mean, they've got a thing, they can see what they're doing. And then they open up that they expand that vertebrae that crushed, they open it, put a balloon in there to open it, clean it all out and then fill it with cement.
Like real cement?
Well, I I, you know, I didn't, I didn't wanna sound like, I like, I didn't ask a lot of questions like that, like what kind of cement? I mean, you know, I figured they know what they're doing. And he said, and then 15 minutes later, that hardens and then wait an hour, I'll get up and walk around. He said, all this pain you're feeling is gonna be gone. What you're gonna feel is just where they, cuz they have to go through bone, he said, for a few days. And then you're gonna be golden. I said, sign me up. Isn't that cool? All the new technology?
Yeah, also scary though.
It's scary, but he took an hour and a nurse explain, you know, they have to explain, it's new. You know, cuz you're just standing there like, you're gonna do what?
Especially your back. Like you always wonder, is it, like, it's, it's like scary, it's a little scary. It's a little.
I've had two back surgeries and these were the ones that took like forever to get better, you know, six months because there's a big incision and everything. This is none of that. It's a different injury. So it's, you know, it's, it's easy to understand. And then he said, and and you'll get some of your height back. I said, oh, my God, you know, like a quarter of an inch. Oh, good. So, yeah, I'm excited about it.
My back. I'm tired of being shrinking.
My son's picking me up and bringing me home and then I should be good to go.
That's awesome. Well, I would hope everything works out.
Thank you. I thank you. I'm excited to have it done. I really am cuz it's getting to be a drag not being a, it's hard walking my dog. I can't bend over, you know, it's just can't pick anything up. So I'll be back.
Good.
Okay. Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
I think we're good.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in.